The 29th of May Special Meeting, Prairie City Council. At this time, I ask that if you have any electronic devices, please shut them off. And if you choose to speak to us, we have little yellow cards you can fill out outside as you want to bring them in and give to the city clerk. At this time, I ask you all to stand and join with the mayor in doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everybody would please sign in.
Please.
I guess it's working.
Hang on.
Third time's the charm. All the council members present, as well as the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and all our department heads, thank you all for coming. The only thing I'll mention beginning of this meeting is that the last meeting, I changed the approval process on the motions in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and we had a little discussion about that with the city attorney. And what we're going to do is make sure that all votes are registered by name in our minutes. That'll be the official registration of the minutes, but we'll be able to go back to unanimous consent if we don't have any objections to whatever motion's on the floor. Okay? Having said that, does anybody have an objection to tonight's agenda? Any objections? If there are no objections, it's approved by unanimous consent. And we're going to move on to ordinance 1650, amending Chapter 102, Article 20, flood damage prevention. Madam Clerk, if you would read that for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 1650 reads by title, "An Ordnance by the City of Crestview, Florida, Providing for Authority and Purpose, Providing for the Amendment to the City of Crestview Code of Ordinances, Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 102, Land Use Regulations, Providing for the repeal and replacement of Article XX twenty, Flood Damage Prevention, Providing for the Adoption of Flood Hazard Maps, Providing for the Designation of a Flood Plane Administrator, Providing for the Adoption of Procedures and Criteria for Development in Flood Hazard Areas, Providing for the Adoption of Local Administrative Amendments to the Florida Building Code, Providing for Applicability, Providing for the Repeal of All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance 1650.
Deanna Theresa, if you would explain that, Nicholas, please.
Gentlemen, as we discussed at the last meeting, this ordinance is to put us in compliance with the state, with FEMA, and to update ours to agree with the Florida Building Code and the National Flood Insurance Program. We went through most of this at our last meeting, so should I simply go for questions? If anybody has questions?
Yes, if you would.
Okay.
We have any questions? I don't hear any questions. Just to explain to the audience and anybody watching, these ordinances we're dealing with tonight have all been gone to one public hearing and one vote, so if we don't have any questions, or if we're going kind of quickly, it's because we're familiar with them, and this is the second vote on it. And so, since we don't have any questions, do we have any objections? No objections, I don't hear any objections, therefore, this ordinance is passed by unanimous consent. And we'll move on to ordinance 1656. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Ordinance number 1656 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Amending its Adopted Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Authority and Purpose for Such Modification, Providing for General Provisions of the Modified Plan, Providing for the City of Crestview Adoption of the 2017 Community Redevelopment Plan, Providing for Repealer, Providing for Severability, and Providing for Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance 1656.
Okay.
Gentlemen, this is the ordinance to update the City of Crestview's 2015 Community Redevelopment Plan, which will be update the projects, objectives, plans for development. It will also extend the term of the Crestview Redevelopment Agency for an additional 15 years, which means it will terminate in 2040. The revised plan will be titled, "City of Crestview 2017 Community Redevelopment Plan." If there are questions?
Gentlemen, any questions? Any objections? There are no objections. Ordinance 16-
I had one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Block.
There. It says in here that some is attached, but I don't see anything attached.
The attachment is that great big long book? That great big, the one that's about this big and about that thick? That is your attached master plan? And I think each of the council actually have a copy of that plan in their office. We had brought it last time, but I didn't bring it tonight.
Okay, because there's an objection, we'll go through the full vote. Can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Block.
I move to adopt ordinance 1656 on a second reading and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk, secretaries.
Second, Mr. President.
I have a motion second to approve ordinance 1656. Any further discussion? Please go to voting. And the vote carries five to zero. Ordinance 1660, please, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 1660 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Crestview, Florida, Calling an Election of Proposed Charter Revisions to be Held on Tuesday, August 28, 2018, Providing for Submission to the Electors for Approval or Disapproval of a Proposal to Repeal and Replace the Existing Charter with a New Charter or Portion Thereof, With the Provision Stated Here and Below, Providing that Supervisor of Elections Appointed as Elections Officer, Providing that the City Shall Bear All Cost of Election, Establishing Ballot Titles and Sumories, Providing for New Comprehensively Worthed City Charter, Providing for Adoption of the City Council Manager Form of Government, Providing for an Appointed City Clerk, Providing for Conformance, Providing Severability, Providing for the Repeal of Ordinances in Conflict, and Providing an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance 1660.
Okay. Gentlemen, this is the end results of what's been quite a while of work between the council and the Charter Review Committee and the attorneys. So, ordinance 1660 sets forth the verbiage for the proposed charter, the amendment ballot questions for the referendum, and will allow the electorate to finally have a vote on the issue. Is there questions?
Any questions? Any objections? I'll just make a remark, and that is reiterate what Theresa just said, and that is, this is a long process, we wanted to make sure it got done expeditiously, so the reason we called a special meeting tonight was to make sure that we got this done and over to the supervisor election. Since I made comments, let's go ahead to the formal process. Can I have action, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Block.
I move to adopt ordinance 1660 on a second reading and send to the mayor, council president, city clerk, secretaries.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion second to adopt ordinance 1660 on second reading and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. Any further discussion? Please vote. And that vote is unanimous, five to zero. Okay, ordinance 1647 is a little bit different.
Four to five.
Yes, 1645, my bad. Thank you. 1645 is a little bit different, and therefore, we'll go through the procedures here. Pursuant to Article 4, Chapter 102, the City Code, and Florida statutes, I now declare the public hearing open to receive oral and written comments into the official record concerning the consideration of the adoption of Plan Amendments 18 S-3, 18 S-4, and 18 S-5 to the Comprehensive Plan. This will be accomplished by the adoption of ordinancees 1645, 1647, and 1649. For the record, the council asks that all speakers identify themselves by name and address. We also ask the speakers to confine their remarks to the time allocated when recognized by the chair. Written comments received by the staff shall be presented to the council, and excerpts listed in the official minutes. The growth management staff and the city's consultant, Mr. Jack Dorman of GE Dorman and Associates, will speak on behalf of the city. I now call upon the city clerk to recite for the record legal notice data provided to the public concerning this public hearing.
Mr. President, publication of the legal notice for the ordinances was accomplished in the Crestview News Bulletin on May 16, 2018.
The first matter for consideration is the public hearing, the small-scale Plan Amendment 18 S-3, which will be accomplished by ordinance number 1645. I now ask the city clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Mr. President, ordinance number 1645 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Amending its Adopted Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Authority, Providing for Findings of Fact, Providing for Purpose, Providing for Changing the Future Land Use Designation from Oaklusa County Low Density Residential to City of Crestview Public Lands Future Land Use Category on Approximately 2.7 Acres More of Lettuce in Section 4 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, Providing for Future Land Use Map Amendment and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance 1645 by title.
I now ask for presentation of staff reports and comments, if any, whether written or verbal. The chair recognizes the growth management director of staff, department staff, to present these staff reports or comments.
Mr. President, this is the recently annexed 2.7 acres of property that is adjacent to Spanish Trail Park. It has been developed as part of that park, and no further development is planned at this time. There are no written comments or verbal communications received from the public. The staff, the technical review committee, and the local planning agency recommend approval of the small-scale Plan Amendment.
The chair now recognizes the consultant to provide input regarding Plan Amendment Number 18 S-3.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Theresa's brief report pretty much covered it. It's an existing parcel at Spanish Trail Park. It's got the retention area and some fencing, and that's it. Real straightforward stuff.
Any questions?
Be happy to answer any questions.
We're off with this, we've seen it before.
Yes. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the ordinance 1645? Anyone in the audience like to speak for or against the ordinance 1645? Seeing none, at this time, I will close the public input, except for direct questions by members of the council. Council members, do you have any comments? Call for action, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Page.
I move to adopt ordinance 1645 and send to mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures.
Right, I'll show my second. I have a motion second to adopt ordinance 1645 and send to mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. Any further discussion? Please go to voting. And... Hold up. And the vote is unanimous, five to zero, in favor of all the ordinance. Okay, ordinance 1646 is quasi-judicial hearing.
Just one time, you want to close the public hearing for 18 S-3?
No.
Did you want to close the public hearing for this?
I closed it before we voted. I closed to the public before we took a vote.
The only thing I was making reference to is, this is closed to everybody now. Not only the public, but to us two, we voted on it.
Yeah, yeah. Statement on this, is that what you said?
Well, I was trying to be nice.
Okay, but no, I need to know.
Yeah, last statement, I don't know.
Yeah.
So much.
You got me out of sync here.
18 S-3.
I now declare the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18 S-3 closed. Thank you, Mr. Page.
You're right.
Six. Six is quasi-judicial in nature, and so I'll go through dialogue there. I now open this quasi-judicial hearing, and I ask the clerk to read ordinance 1646 by title.
Mr. President, ordinance 1646 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Providing for the Rezoning of 2.7 Acres More or Less of Real Property Located in Section 4 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, From the Oaklusa County Residential 1 Zoning District to the City of Crestview Public Lands Zoning District, Providing for Authority, Providing for the Updating of the Crestview Zoning Map, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance number 1646.
This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi-judicial rules. The city, applicant, and party shall each be allowed up to 20 minutes to present their cases. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each, or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. City staff, the applicant, or a party may be allowed to cross-examine any witness, except for a public participant, following their testimony for a period not to exceed two minutes per witness. The city applicant and party who have been cross-examined may have up to two minutes for rebuttal. All witnesses, parties, the applicant, citizen, participants, and their representatives, and city staff who plan to speak at the hearing, shall collectively be sworn at this time by the city clerk or the city clerk's designee. All those who plan to speak, please rise and raise your right hand. Anybody in the audience is going to speak during this public hearing? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, we're not going to swear anybody in. Throughout the hearing, before speaking, state your name and address. I'll also announce whether or not you represent a group of participants. All speakers, address the council from the speaker's stand. I now ask city staff to enter the project file into the record.
This is submitted to you for the rezoning of the 2.7 acres that was previously in 18 S-3, and this is to allow for the zoning assignment of public lands to be classified into public lands district zoning to be placed on the property effective such time as the Comprehensive Plan assigning the public lands future land use to the property.
May I now ask the applicant, who is the owner of record or the authorized agent, to present his case, including witnesses? No one present?
That's because it's the City of Crestview is the... And normally, unless there's people to speak, we don't go through the formality of the quasi-judicial dialogue. Just mention it.
Well, you all gave me the dialogues on this phone.
Well, that's when it says, "if necessary," that's what we're...
Nobody said, "if it's necessary." I said, "if it's necessary."
It doesn't hurt to give everybody an introduction to it.
Okay, are there any witnesses from the general public who wish to speak for or against the application? At this time, the staff, the applicant, and parties in that order may have two minutes for rebuttal, which we don't need. Having no further testimony, the council will commence deliberations and render a decision. Are there any comments from the members of the council? Hearing no further comments, so I have a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Block.
I move to adopt ordinance 1646 on a second reading and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signature.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second to adopt ordinance 1646 on a second reading, present to the mayor, council president, city clerk for signatures. Any discussion? Please vote. And it carries five to zero. Okay, ordinance 1647. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Ordinance number 1647 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Amending its Adopted Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Authority, Providing for Findings of Fact, Providing for Purpose, Providing for Changing the Future Land Use Designation from Oaklusa County Low Density Residential Category to City of Crestview Low Density Residential Future Lands Category on Approximately 0.5 Acres More or Less in Section 20 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, Providing for a Future Land Use Map Amendment and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance number 1647.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I now ask for presentation of staff reports and comments, if any, whether written or verbal. The chair recognizes growth management department staff to present these staff reports or comments.
Mr. President, this was a recently annexed half acre, half acre of property located at 220 Dugan Avenue. This is the... The property is now the site of a new single-family dwelling. There were no written comments or verbal communications received by the public. The staff, technical review committee, and the local planning agency recommend approval of this small-scale amendment.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes the consultant to provide input regarding Plan Amendment Number 18 S-4.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you just heard and you already knew, this is for a single-family house to come into the city, primarily for city utilities. We recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Dorman.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the witness 1647? Anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against the witness 1647? Seeing none, I close public input for this portion of public hearing, except for direct questions by members of the council. Do you have any input from the council?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Block.
I move to adopt ordinance 1647 on a second reading and send to the mayor, council president, city clerk, secretary.
Right now, we're looking at public input. Do you have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll take your motion. Can someone second the motion?
Second, Mr. President.
Okay. Motion second to approve the adopt ordinance 1647 and send to the mayor, council president, city clerk for signatures. Any discussion? Please go to voting. Vote carries five to zero. We are now on... Ordinance 1648.
Eight.
Eight. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Ordinance number 1648 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Providing for the Rezoning of 0.5 Acres More or Less of Real Property Located in Section 20 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, From Oaklusa County Residential 1 District Zoning to the City's Crestview Single Family Dwelling District Zoning R1, Providing for Authority, Providing for the Updating of the Crestview Zoning Map, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance number 1648.
Now, is there anybody in the audience that's going to speak for or against ordinance 1648? I'm not going to this quasi-judicial stuff. Mr. Theresa, you have it.
Okay. This... The half acre here is the property belonging to Armando and his wife, Virginia Borbon, and they... We first entered into this action whenever they submitted the out-of-city utility request, and this is the fruition would be to zone the properties, City of Crestview, Single Family Dwelling District Zoning R1. And their existing structure that they have placed there meets the requirements of the R1 zoning.
Any questions, Ms. Theresa? No, can I have action, please?
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Block.
I move to adopt ordinance 1648 on a second reading and send to the mayor, council president, city clerk, secretary.
Second.
I have a motion second to adopt ordinance 1648 on a second reading, and send to the mayor, council president, city clerk. Any further discussion? No, please go to voting. And that vote carries five to zero. Ordinance 1649. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 1649 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Amending its Adopted Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Authority, Providing for Findings of Fact, Providing for Purpose, Providing for Changing the Future Land Use Designation from Oaklusa County Mixed Use Category to City of Crestview Commercial Future Land Use Category on Approximately 1.5 Acres More or Less in Section 32 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, Providing for Future Land Use Map Amendment and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance number 1649.
I now ask for presentation of staff reports and comments, if any, whether written or verbal. The chair recognizes growth management department staff to present any staff reports or comments.
Mr. President, this is the recently annexed 1.5 acres more or less of property located in the southwestern quadrant of the intersection of John King Road and Live Oak Church Road. It is a fully... It has been fully developed with nearly a 9,000-square-foot facility that houses the Child Care Network daycare, together with the parking infrastructure for same. The facility is serviced by... Is served by City of Crestview Utilities for potable water, sanitary sewer, and garbage services. There were no written comments or verbal communications received from the public. The staff, technical review committee, and the local planning agency recommends adoption of the Small-Scale Plan Amendment.
The chair now recognizes the consultant to provide input regarding Plan Amendment Number 18 S-5.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty much what I said before. As Ms. Theresa mentioned, it's fully developed. We've got the Child Care Network out there. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we recommend approval.
Any questions, gentlemen? Hey, Mr. Dorman, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the witness 1649? Anybody in the witness like to speak for or against the witness 1649? Seeing none, I close the public input for this portion of public hearing, except for direct questions by members of the council. Any comments, questions by the council? Seeing none at this time, I will close public input. I already said that. Okay, call for action, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr.
I move to adopt ordinance 1649 and send to mayor, council president, city clerk for signatures.
Right, I'll show my second. I have a motion second to adopt ordinance 1649 and send to the mayor, council president, city clerk for signatures. Any further discussion? If not, please go to voting. And that vote is five to zero. Mr. Dorman, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Which one was that?
Your 51, next.
Keep up on the vote. Anybody in the audience that's going to speak for or against ordinance 1651 rezoning? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'd please read that.
Certainly will. Ordinance number 1651 reads by title, "An Ordnance of the City of Crestview, Florida, Providing for the Rezoning of 1.5 Acres More or Less of Real Property Located in Section 32 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, From Oaklusa County Mixed Use District Zoning to the City of Crestview Commercial District Zoning C1, Providing for Authority, Providing for the Updating of the Crestview Zoning Map, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance number 1651.
Okay. Gentlemen, this affects the parcel there with the Child Care Network. It's currently zoned mixed use. This ordinance 1651 will assign the commercial C1 zoning to the property, which will be... Bring it into compliance with our comprehensive plan. bring it into compliance with our Comprehensive Plan.
Any questions? If not, a call for action?
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hayes.
I move to adopt ordinance, to adopt ordinance 1651 on the second reading and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signature.
Second. I have a motion, second, to adopt ordinance 1651 on second reading, send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. Any discussion? Seeing none, please go to voting. And that carries unanimously five to zero. And finally, I think, ordinance 1661. Madam Clerk, anybody going to address 16, ordinance 1661 in the audience? Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 1661 reads by title. An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 193.35 acres more or less of real property located in Section 27 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from Oaklusa County Planned Unit Development PUD zoning to the City of Crestview Single Family Dwelling District zoning R1, providing for authority, providing for the updating of the Crestview zoning map, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1661.
Gentlemen, this is property that is currently owned by Redstone Land 2017 Florida FL and LLC, who is the property owner. Jenkins Engineering is authorized agent, and Matt Zinke is your project engineer, and they submitted application to assign the zoning designation for this parcel, which was actually, same being was out of a certain 340 acres that was annexed into the jurisdictional limit of the City of Crestview by ordinance 1277 on October 9, 2006. The property was processed through a comprehensive Comp Plan Amendment 0812, ordinance 1415, adopted November 11, 2008, and was assigned the Low Density Residential Future Land Use. This property, this portion of the property still remains in Oaklusa County Planned Unit Development zoning district. This application requests the assignment of Single Family Dwelling District zoning R1 be placed on the property. The site is undeveloped at this time, however, conceptual plans show that this is going to be the next phase of the Redstone Common subdivision, and it should be known as Redstone East. We do, of course, we don't have a complete layout. We have a conceptual there that shows about 400 homes there. The parcel is inundated with quite a bit of wetlands on the most eastern side.
Gentlemen, any questions? No, I call for action, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Blocker.
I move to adopt ordinance 1661 on the second reading and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signature.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adopt ordinance 1661 on second reading, send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. Any further discussion? If not, please go to voting. And that carries five to zero.
Mr. President, may I confirm who's second? I heard two voices.
Mr. Cox did.
Mr. Cox, okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
No, really, thank you. This time, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the city council for three-minute public input? Anybody in the audience would like to address the city council this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to item seven, which is a request for a fee waiver for a fundraiser at the Spanish Trail Park. Who's going to present that?
No, we asked the questers to be here tonight, so...
Well, this, this is an item that came up at the last meeting, and there was a question because we didn't have, we didn't have all the information. We received it since then.
We have the information, we don't have the people to talk. The information's all on there. Your fee waiver request is on.
Right, but what I'm saying is that there was some of the information was missing last night.
Yeah.
And that's why we didn't want to take a vote on it? Is there anybody that would like to make a motion on this?
Mr. President, I move that we table this item.
Right. Motion, second, to table this item?
I will, I will remind the council that this event is being held before the next council meeting. It is advertised to be held on June 9.
I understand that, but...
We can waive the thesis after the fact, but...
I think our only concern is, is two times it's been in front of us and no one has come, so we're looking for that input.
Mr. President.
I have a motion, second, to table this, discussion, please.
Mr. President, one thing I see on here, and I don't know if it's correct, but, Madam Clerk, I see there's no insurance recovered.
We have not received an insurance certificate.
So, without any insurance, I don't think, I don't think we could really ensure us for that. There's no insurance provided on this, and I would not go for that without proof of insurance.
They cannot hold the event without insurance, whether you approve the fee waiver or not.
We don't have proof of insurance, Mr. President, and nobody's here to present, to present anything either. We've just got a piece of paper that we're looking at, and...
What we'd have to do then is, Ms. Cox would have to rescind his motion and have a new motion if you want to, if you want to do it that way, to disapprove it rather than table it.
I'm okay with that.
Rescind your motion, okay? Somebody make a motion then? Somebody make another motion, please.
Mr. President, if nobody makes a motion, it's not die anyway, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody, last call, anybody in the audience would like to speak to us? I just remind, I just like to remind everybody that we went through things so quickly tonight because this is not the first time we've seen these tent ordinances. We've been through them meticulously at our last meeting, and we're required to have shoot-up appearing to two votes. That's what happened this evening. Thank you all for coming. I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and then we're going to take a year break, and not before we start the next meeting. This meeting is adjourned.